Okay.
Okay, y'all ready guys? Welcome one and all to the October the seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Sherry County Board of Commissioners meeting. We're glad you're here. Uh, I think we might have a fairly short meeting tonight, but we'll sometimes are surprised. So, uh, very happy to have you with us and we'll, uh, have an opportunity for you to say what's on your mind here a little later. Uh, so I will call the meeting to order. Uh, and with that, I will ask that Commissioner Eddie Harris render the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Harris?
If you would, please stand. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here tonight to do the people's business. We thank you for this beautiful day and this beautiful weather that you provide us always here in this part of North Carolina. We pray for our people, its citizens and our county government, dear Lord. We pray for your mercy and your guidance and your help in our nation today, dear Lord. We pray for the folks out in western North Carolina, North Georgia and Tennessee that have been greatly affected by this hurricane, dear Lord. We thank you for all the, the, uh, mercy and the help and, and, uh, and everything that you're doing for this, uh, terribly impacted region. And, uh, we ask for your continued, uh, guidance there, dear Lord. And, uh, we are grateful for all the things that you have done for us in that regard, dear Lord. We, we ask that you watch over the people in Florida who are facing another hurricane, dear Lord, and watch and, and, uh, and help them as it impacts, uh, our nation again, dear Lord. Thank you again for the grace, mercy, guidance that you've given us. And we ask all of these things that are in your name, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Okay, gentlemen, you have looked at tonight's agenda and I hope you like it. I'm looking for a motion to approve it as is. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for Commissioner Bill Goins, do I hear a second?
Okay.
Second, Commissioner Mark Marion, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the agenda has been approved. Okay, also in your packet, you have seen the meeting minutes of this board that happened on September the sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. And if you've read them over and you agree with them, before they go into the, uh, record, I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes of September the sixteenth. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion for Commissioner Harris, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the meeting minutes of September the sixteenth have been approved. Uh, which brings us down to our consent agenda. Uh, and, uh, before we get a motion on approval, we always like to let you know a little bit about what the bullet points involve. Uh, and, and how it relates to what's in the meat of the consent agenda. We usually just try to do a little bit of cleanup. And, uh, for the sake of time and just some bookkeeping, we, we, uh, we do several things in consents to keep you from having to, uh, endure all that. But with that said, I'm going to call on County Manager Chris Knopf to, uh, read and discuss at your will, anything that you feel like you need to, the bullet points concerning the consent agenda tonight, if you will, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, which will be October twenty-third through the thirty-first. Next is an invest in Surrey reallocation request from the Horn Creek Farm Committee, and thus to direct those funds towards their apple orchard facility. Next item is to allow Surrey Community College to install a batting cage for their softball team at Fisher River Park, which is their home field. Next are position reclassifications in DSS and Public Works. Next is the waiting list local policy required, uh, by the state for DSS. Next item is the budget amendment number three, and this is to make adjustments for the Health Foundation and for stream rehabilitation projects throughout the county. Next is a surplus item, and it's a sheriff's cruiser. And finally, the resolution approving conveyance of personal property. That's to send a mower that has been used by Parks and Recreation to another unit of government, which is Surrey Community College. And that is the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Knopf. And with that, gentlemen, I'm looking for a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented by Chris Knopf. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for Commissioner Mark Marion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bill Goins, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the consent agenda has been approved. Okay, it looks like, uh, that brings us down to special recognitions and I'll pass some of these out. Uh, so gentlemen, let's go down. We got some Eagle Scouts amongst us here tonight, and we're here to present you some awards. Okay. Let's see, uh, we got some, how many do we have, five? How you guys want to do this? Do you, uh, you want us to call? I'm gonna, I'm gonna read these and, and, uh, as we, how do these read? We're all, we're all probably reading the same here. I'm gonna ask you, uh, to come up individually by the troop, troop five forty-five. And, uh, anybody representing troop five forty-five, Boy Scout troop five forty-five? Oh, oh, okay, okay, okay. All right, and, uh, I'll read, I'm gonna read, uh, I'm gonna read yours. This is for William Osborne Johnson, is that right? Mr. Johnson, thank you, Senator, come on, we'll hear.
All right.
Now, there we go. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna read you a certificate of recognition. This recognition for you, William Osborne Johnson, with Boy Scout troop five forty-five, is hereby presented as an expression of this board's admiration and appreciation of your attainment to Eagle Scout and the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand and twenty-four, and for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Sherry County. Your award is presented this seventh day of October, two thousand and twenty-four, with Sherry County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris and Larry Johnson. And here is your award.
Thank you.
And congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Do you want, you want?
Do you want, I'm gonna get a couple, this, since it's just a few of them. Do you want to tell us about your Boy Scout project? Would you, would you be, okay, give us a few words here, if you were. Tell us, tell us what you did for your Boy Scout project.
For my project, uh, I attained and attended Westfield Elementary for my elementary school. I went there kindergarten through fifth grade. And I remembered up at the blacktop, back behind the school, that the seating they had there was rough. I remember getting hurt on it countless times, just falling off of it. It was these really old metal benches they had up there, kind of like picnic tables. They were rusty, they were kind of falling apart. And I remember they had took them out, I think my fifth grade year, they'd all took them all out and they didn't have any seating up there. So I went and talked to the principal at the time, who was DJ Sheets, he was my fourth grade teacher. And I asked him, I said, would y'all like some seating up there? This is my Eagle project and I'd love to give back to the school I went to. He said, that was absolutely great. And once we got it all started, I went, got all the materials, I did all the painting, drilling, welding, some of it, wasn't supposed to, but I did it. Grinding all of it. But once we got them done, we had it all disassembled and ready to go. We went up there, got them all assembled and put them up there. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it, but he ended up sending me an email and saying they were absolutely wonderful and he greatly appreciated them. And I hope they get used, I hope they get, you know, kids and adults sitting on them, making all comfy so the teachers don't have too hard of a day, dealing with all them youngins. But, uh, that's, that's what I did. Uh, it was nice, it was a very fun experience, it was awesome. I learned some new things building the benches. And I think I bettered that school as a whole, so, which was my main goal.
Thank you. Jackson Collins, troop five fifty-six. County of Surrey, recognized as Jackson Collins, troop five fifty-six, is hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank and the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand and twenty-four, and for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County. Presented this the seventh day of October, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Chairman, Mark Marion, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris and Larry Johnson. Congratulations.
Um, so for my project, um, I went to Franklin Elementary School for all of my, um, elementary school time. Um, there was a very special teacher's assistant there, um, the whole time while I was there. But sadly, um, during COVID, um, he passed away. His name was, uh, Tim Simpson. Um, so the idea was kind of brought up, um, before I started the project of doing an outdoor classroom, because he loved the outdoors. Um, but it never really started making ground. Um, so I took the, um, the idea and project, um, and ran with it. Um, it's a, uh, twenty-eight by, or twenty-four by eighteen outdoor classroom shelter, has picnics, um, and mulch all around it, and it has a walkway going up to it. Um, so that way, all the, um, students can go outside and learn and get a change in scenery for their learning. Because I know sometimes, uh, it's hard to sit in a classroom the whole day. So, uh, yeah, that was my project.
Very good. Connor Benjamin Smith, troop five fifty-six. All right, the County of Surrey, Connor Benjamin Smith, troop five five six, is hereby presented the certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank and the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand and twenty-four, and for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County. Presented this the seventh day of October, two thousand and twenty-four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris and Larry Johnson, and congratulations. Thank you, Lord.
Sure.
So, uh, for my project was over at Twelve Oaks Retirement Community. And some of them, some of the elder, elderly's had dementia. It's a very bad thing that could happen. Some of them could forget about who they are, for, forget about their family and friends. So my idea was to build raised player boxes. That, when they use them and plant wherever they want them, it could help them remember who they were and who, what else they forgot about. So, uh,
That's very good.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to add?
Yes. And for, and for some of them are in wheelchairs and they won't be able to like get up or walk around. So we built them about hip length. So they won't have to get on the ground or stand up. Or the ones that can stand up won't have to get on the ground and won't have to bend over. And while they, and they can plant wherever they want them. And while they do it, it could help them remember who all they forgot about and who they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Rantsum Cummings, troop five sixty-one. Charles not here. There you go.
Is, is anybody representing troop five sixty-one here? No. Okay. Who, who we got, let's see what else we got to.
Hannah Lynn Curry. She's in, from five twenty-nine, troop five twenty-nine. Okay.
Okay, look like they're not here. And there's that it, is that right? Uh, well, we certainly thank you and congratulate your success on your Eagle Scout. And there's a lot of folks here that hold that near and dear to our hearts as well. I think Bill's an Eagle Scout and I've had a son that's an Eagle Scout. And we've all got some scouting, uh, uh, history that we're, we're happy to have been honored in. And we want to get your photo before you leave. Thank you for telling us about your projects. And some of you scout masters that are back there, if you want to come up and get in a group photo, we'll invite you to do that now. And so come on up with, regardless of which troop you're with, if you will leave, don't be bashful, come on up. Anybody else, bring anybody with you that's representing any troop, come on up, we'll get her. Get your picture made. Yeah. Photography's back there. And they get, come on in, my guy. Let's get toward the, let's get toward the, yeah. Come on, guys. I'll get another side, that was it. Okay, now, there you go. Thank you, Charles. Congratulations, let's give them all another round of applause. Thank you. Lou, how you doing? Good, say, sir. Thank you, always. Okay, I believe that brings us to tonight's part of the program that we will give you an opportunity to come to the open forum and say what comments might be interesting to you involving county government or most anything else within a pretty big realm of possibility. So anybody wants to come to open forum, the forum is now open and we invite anyone to come up with your comments. Okay. Looking you over, I'm not, not seeing anybody getting too anxious back there. Chad, you not wanting to come up, it looks like, all right. I believe we have no speakers tonight, so we will, uh, now close the time for open forum. And with that, I'm going to call up our Surrey County Tax Administrator, Ms. Penny Harrison. Penny, how you doing tonight? Come on up.
I'm doing good, how are you?
And anybody else that wants to come with you?
Yeah.
Penny, let me see that I've got this understood here. You're going to talk about first item is the, uh, two thousand and twenty-five proposed schedule of values and what the general statutes call for that is. You first presented in September, then we hear you proclaim it in October, and then we meet on it the first meeting in November. Is that the way that works?
Um, we have a public hearing tonight and then you adopt it in November.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't take any action except just to let you announce it in the open, in the public hearing, is that right?
Yes.
You, so you're going to read this tonight?
Well, I can read this.
Which part of the, which, when do you want me to open the public hearing? Now?
Yes, sir.
All right, I am opening a public hearing concerning the two thousand and twenty-five schedule of appraisal values and agricultural, horticultural, forestry value manuals. So with that said, I'm looking for any public comment concerning the schedule of appraisals, as has already been presented once by the Tax Administrator Penny Harrison. And any comment, concern, questions, now be the time to come up and talk about it. Okay. Hearing none, this public hearing concerning the two thousand and twenty-five schedule of appraisals is now closed. So if you will, proceed, Penny, thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure there isn't any questions from the board about the proposed schedule values.
Twenty twenty-five is the year.
Yes, sir.
Evaluation.
Yes.
And the, uh, Mr. Hall, is that right? Yeah. Um, and tell us again briefly where we are, um, as far as, um, valuations as far as real estate in Surrey County. I know you reported to us that I thought, think you said valuations were at about eighty, is it eighty percent or?
Yes, we're, we're in, we're just, um, going back, rechecking everything now. We're pretty much over ninety percent now, everything, we're just checking and we're continually working sales all the way up till December thirty-first. So it's going to be a continual thing, but we're winding down and everything's looking good.
Okay, and, and we're going to reevaluate, um, when, when do we do reevaluation again?
The new value is going to affect on January one.
So we'll start the process then?
Yes.
And?
It'll be effective January one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay.
And next year's recommended budget, there'll be a published revenue neutral rate.
Okay.
What the difference would be between old values and new ones, yes?
So you're gonna, and you'll send out letters to the, um, property owners with the new valuations?
February of two thousand and twenty-five.
In February?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And you're saying that my understanding is there's not going to be any great big shocks as far as, I mean, what, 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 what are you saying? I, I'm, I'm not sure I'm following you.
It's going to be an estimated, you know, around twenty percent.
Average.
Yeah.
Okay, so my eighty percent figure was eighty something was?
Different, yeah.
Yeah, so valuations across, I mean, generally speaking, would be twenty some, twenty to percent or whatever, over what they're?
Sales ratio, I think that's what you're talking about.
Over what they are now.
Yeah, some, some neighborhoods will go up more than others, but it's around twenty percent on the average for the whole county, that's just an average. That's not to say some won't go up twenty-six and some fourteen, I mean, it's got to come up to an average there somewhere. Some could come up forty or more. I mean, it's just according to the sales, everything's sales based and it's according to those neighborhoods. That would be quite shocking.
Well, yeah, and that's why I'm scratching my head there a little bit, um, you know, some of these sales, um, numbers that I've seen, you know, are pretty astounding, really, um, based on what the property was previously valued. I mean, by Surrey County Government, I mean, I, I, I thought it would be way north of twenty percent or whatever.
As of right now, it's twenty percent, you know.
Okay.
It got through December and we'll have a, you know, a good number at the retreat to discuss further.
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion along those lines? If not, Penny?
Thank you very much.
Uh,
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure we have a very act, we will have a very active Board of Adjustments, uh, in February and March, whatever, won't we?
The Board of?
I'd say probably will.
Yeah, that Board of Equalization and Review, yes, sir.
There'll be some.
Just make, make sure that we got all the positions filled.
Uh, okay, Penny. What do you have next for us that you need action on tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next thing I have is requesting the debt set off letters to be mailed in January. This is, uh, where we will send a request to the state. This is, um, a letter that I request every year, uh, approval by the board.
And I guess that'll take a motion and action, gentlemen. So you've seen the debt set off letters here in your packet, uh, I guess, debt set off notice. And if you like it and you feel like it's appropriate, uh, then I guess we'll take action tonight to authorize our tax administrator to send it out. We'll take a minute to look at it again, there's a copy of one. Basically, it's just a notice that, uh, we're serving to the taxpayers and a glimpse of what the, uh, past due tax would have been if they get one of these, that it will be, for example, in the, uh, I think this is just, when would you, when would these be, be effective, when you send them out? I mean, you, you want to send them out, but?
We'll send them out in January for the two thousand and twenty-four.
The twenty-four collections, they would, won't go out until January, is that correct?
Twenty-five, yes.
All right, gentlemen, I think one time we sent one out that might have had a little language that caused a few calls, is that fair to say?
It was early.
Yeah, a little early, we sent them out a little early. That's why we're asking this. These are for, to be sent out in two thousand and twenty-five, but it's for the tax collection of two thousand and twenty-four. And they're not going out one day early, they're going out sometime. And I believe this, you've got this dated on the, what is it, Bill, the seventh?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, twenty-second. Guys, you like that?
So taxes are due on the sixth?
Yes.
And this goes out on the twenty-fifth or twenty-second?
This year is, was due September one, delinquent, January sixth. But I think, um, it'll be past due the seventh this year because of the weekend, but?
We'll give them a little bit of mercy, a little bit of grace and the letter won't go out.
Till the twenty-second.
Till the twenty-second of January.
Okay.
Hey, gentlemen, I'm looking for action, a motion on that to, to allow the, uh, Penny Harrison, our tax administrator, to send that letter out, if you like what it says and the date that she says she's going to send them out on or by. I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion that we give our tax administration, tax administrator, permission to mail debt send off letters to tax, taxpayers on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, have a motion, looking for a second?
Second.
Motion for Commissioner Bill Goins, second for Commissioner Eddie Harris, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and you have your permission. Next item, Penny.
Okay, um, the last item I have is the request to schedule foreclosure sales. I have four. I was able to visit a couple of these. One is in Elkin, number two is in Elkin, and then I have a couple of them that were not able, we didn't, we weren't able to get to, like, number one, the last four digits, seventy-five oh five. I have a preferred bidder on number one. And, uh, then also, I mean, the rest of them are just proposed bids.
And are you, and what do you think about those other proposed bids or the, on number one? Uh, what are you suggesting? What do you think?
The reason I think there's a proposed bid, there must be surrounding owners that are interested. And they've already give the Kenya Law Firm money to initiate the first bid.
So you're requesting our board to approve the proposed bids?
Yes, sir.
Permission to proceed to finalize the foreclosure?
Yes, sir.
On these?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gentlemen, you've looked them over? There's, and there's these, these four that you have listed?
There is actually five, two are going to be sold together.
Okay.
Number four.
Oh, number four includes?
The last two.
Two parcels, two parcel numbers, yes, I see that. What this action would do, would, would approve the proposed bids and give you permission to proceed with Kenya to finalize the foreclosure?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Gentlemen, your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion for Commissioner Larry Johnson. I'm looking for a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bill Goins, any discussion, any concern? Everybody good? Okay, no discussion? All in favor of sending these proposed bids and permission to finalize the foreclosure procedure, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, motion carries unanimously? Thank you very much. Penny, anything else?
That's all, thank you.
All right. Hold on, let's see, might have some questions.
A lot of questions.
All right.
Okay, on the seven, seven, one, three. Four tenths of an acre.
Yes, it's a?
Plus tax base.
Cumulated back taxes.
Yep.
This is a twenty, twenty twenty-one value. I don't know.
It's Hay Street, that is, George, is that somewhere in there, in that area around McDonald's back in there? Yep, yeah, back off, right, yeah, it's in an area that's becoming highly commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on that back street there.
The, did you, have you sold any of the other properties that we?
I have, I sold one last week.
Which one was that?
Two. Um, we sold, I can't remember the profit, we sold six last week, so without having them with me, I'm sorry, I can't remember.
I mean, did, did we recover the taxes and?
Two of, out of the six, we did, but I'm, I'm pretty sure we had an upset bid today on Park Drive because someone come in and was?
So that, some of them are still subject to upset bid?
Yes, for ten days, and when I talked to Rick Kenya, he told me that was the strategy now, was to wait till the upset bid come through, and then they started bidding on it.
Okay, so all of them are still up, subject to upset bid?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, good enough, thank you, Penny.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Penny. Okay. County Manager Chris Knopf, boards and committees, what do you got for us?
We only have the one item, you have a memo from Andrew, there is a two-year term expiring on the Board of Health and a three-year term expiring on the Northern Regional Hospital, Hospital Board of Trustees, those two individuals are willing to be reappointed if the board so chooses, and we're just bringing those to your attention this evening.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm looking for reappointment approval here, and we'll take the first one is on the Board of Health. I'm looking for a suggestion or a motion to reappoint Dr. Richard Brennerger or someone else.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make, I'm on the Board of Health, and Dr. Richard Brennerger has been a very valued board member. As if y'all remember, he helped us with a particular situation this past year, they were very vital, he's willing to serve again, and I would, I would make that motion that we reappoint Dr. Richard Brennerger to the Surrey County Board, Health Board.
Thank you, sir, have a motion to reappoint Dr. Richard Brennerger to the Surrey County Board of Health, they'll hear a second.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Bill Goins, any discussion? All in favor for the reappointment of Dr. Richard Brennerger to the Surrey County Board of Health, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries unanimously. And Chris, the other one was for the Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees, and following that same protocol, Bill, I believe you are the appointee to the Northern Regional Hospital Board, so I'll turn that one over to you.
I'll nominate Andy Gillespie for three-year term to the Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees.
Okay. Motion to appoint Andy Gillespie back to the Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees, they'll hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Mark Marion. Okay, any discussion? Being none, all in favor to reappoint Andy Gillespie back to the Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, motion carries unanimously, thank you, Chris.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All you've got. Okay. That was short. We're going to go to the section of our meeting where this general county business, and before I call on some of you gentlemen for comments, I see Eric Southern, our EMS Director here, and we had asked him to come and maybe with all, in lieu of all going on with the hurricane destruction just west of us and our neighbors, and all the things that Surrey County is doing to help coordinate those efforts, I would like to ask you to come up and give us a brief update or a long update, whatever you've got on your heart, Eric, if you'll come on up and bring anybody with you to help do that, we certainly appreciate you.
Yeah, not too sure about a long update, because you told everybody we wasn't going to be here long tonight.
Oh, that's all right, just, just that microphone, you, we'll take whatever you got, so just proceed, it will.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As everybody knows, the devastation in western North Carolina is still ongoing, there's a lot of pictures that are starting to come out now on social media, there's also a lot of untruth and rhetoric that are out there on social media as well, so can't really say this is exactly what's going on right now because there's still areas that they haven't got into yet, the search efforts are still ongoing, they technically have not switched over to a recovery, so there are still active searches are going on, as of today, they've got fourteen USAR teams, I'm sorry, seventeen USAR teams, and forty Swiftwater teams that are still out there working.
What is a USAR team?
It is a urban search and rescue. So they go in between structural collapse to water, wilderness, you name it, they can pretty much search anything that's out there. We also have around five hundred firefighters, there's also three hundred twenty-eight ambulances that are up there and two field hospitals that are in operation. The death toll that you see, especially with the situation reports that I've been sending out, is low, I know in the news you'll hear people talking about, there's hundreds up there, there's, there's hundreds over here, right now, the actual deaths reports that are being put out that are confirmed, that's the numbers through the state medical examiner's office, because once a body is recovered, they have to, it has to be investigated, and then the state medical examiner will confirm it, once the state medical examiner confirms it, then it becomes a storm-related death, and that process does take a little bit of time. So with the guys here behind me, Surrey County has actually been able to provide several roles, everything from sending resources to moving equipment, we've sent a communications specialist up there, he just returned on Saturday, our emergency manager for the county, Byron Isaacs, he deployed Sunday before last, and he is actually in Ash County as of today, I just had talked to him earlier today, so he went to Buncombe, spent a week up there, now he's going to be in Ash County through Sunday, we believe, and then I'll be going somewhere up there after he returns. The towns like Pilot Mountain, Manor City, the county and the town of Elkin, they have all come together, setting up collection sites, collected a lot of stuff, there is so much outpouring, et cetera, on social media, I've tried to put a few places on those situation reports when we've had them out there, but there's honestly too many to keep up with, I know Surrey on the go has been doing a really good job of trying to get that information out there and pass it along, and more and more churches are coming online, organization groups, nonprofits, they're trying to collect stuff as well, we actually do have a good running list through the Sheriff's Association of donation sites, so that's helped to where people can, I got a message this morning from somebody who had a plane and they was wanting to take some supplies up there, so we're just trying to find locations for all of this, but one important thing to remember is this is going to be ongoing, this is going to be months to over a year. So the donations are wonderful, we want people to keep doing that, but we just need to remember in the coming months, they're going to need more and more stuff, especially as the weather changes. So, but I will let Nick and Brent here tell you a little bit about their experience that they had, they went up there twice? Is that right? Twice?
I went twice.
You went twice, okay, well Brent can talk more than, he's been twice.
Brent, come on up and tell us about your experience.
Well, I don't see a lot, I mean, we went at night to Beach Mountain, and one time we got up there, the only thing you could see was out of the headlights, so a lot of infrastructure damage, we did send two dispatchers to Avery County, they spent three nights. They came, they left last Sunday, come back Wednesday, worked night shifts up there, so some of them could leave. As far as what we saw, yeah, you can see the evidence of the flooding and boom, but going up one ninety-four to Beach Mountain, that was the worst thing we saw, a lot of, a lot of road, a lot of power line damage, other than that, we didn't really see, like I said, it was, we got back one-thirty that morning or whatever, so that was really about all we could see.
Thank you, Brent.
Yeah.
Nick, you got anything to add? I told you guys, we might have some questions for you, come on up, Nick. You're not getting off that easy.
I was with Brent right there, that's what I saw too, a bunch of power lines down. We delivered to Beach Mountain Town Hall a generator from Randolph County we picked up in Morganton. But that's, we delivered it from and just dropped it off up there and come straight back to Surrey County that night that we went up there.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate you folks helping coordinate the efforts and all your service there, come on back up, Eric, before we sit down, we might have some questions you, for you guys, have we, has there been anything asked of Surrey County that we did not deliver, if we had it available, do you know of anything that we have not been able, I mean, we've, we've pretty much responded, I've seen, been keeping up with your list of equipment, we've sent generators, AM radio stations, personnel, C-Com folks, I know you've coordinated with Sheriff's Department, they've made some deploys up there two or three times, I know you're coordinating with local rescue squads, I know that you're coordinating with some of our efforts from municipalities, I know the county sent three tractor trailer loads up there, I know town Pilot Mountain has been involved in sending out some and a load, or maybe more than a load, and so has other churches and other people that I've been talking with, I know people's just, just pulled out a flat trailer on their farm and loaded it up, so I have been extremely happy to see the response, but do you know of anything else that we can do for them? I mean, have we sent them about everything we can loan or everything they need? I also know that we have extended out to Allegheny County the ability to open up our site, one of our sales over at the old Elkin landfill and, and bring their waste down here, we've had to work with the state, so as we've gotten some special permission to do that, so we're trying to help in every way we can, anything you want to add to that, Eric?
No, just to, just kind of reiterate what you was talking about, there is nothing that has been asked of Surrey County, hadn't been provided so far, so anything that they've asked, we've been able to provide, we've actually had a lot of resources that's been on standby that hadn't been used so far, Friday afternoon, we got a request for firefighters to go into Buncombe County, and within just a few minutes, I had six across the county that was ready to go, unfortunately, there was some issues with that request, it didn't get filled, and just a few minutes ago, I was speaking with Byron, he was trying to get another request in Ash County field, and before we could get our guys on it, they had already had somebody else that had come up there, so we're getting ready to fill another request in Buncombe County now, so it bounces back a lot of times, just depending on who's talking to who to get some of these resources in place. The website that you've got there in front of you, that's the State Emergency Management's page, and if you scroll down a little further, you'll see several blocks that have some detailed information on there, such as a county list, and in that list, it'll actually tell you about some specific for each county and donation sites on there, there's also a page on there about rumor control that kind of talks about some of the things that's rumors versus what's actually true, and then there's a lot of links on there about other agencies, contact information for them, roads that are out, you know, information like that on that page as well, so there's a lot of good information on there to pass along.
I know you and I have had several conversations over the last days, and it started off, you know, we were using the FEMA website whereby we'd email, and that way, if you didn't, didn't have somewhere designated to go exactly, that you might get turned around at a checkpoint, and they just send you back home, and some of the complaints we were hearing, you know, when it first started, and it takes a little time to get organized, was, you know, they weren't getting a response back, is that, is that system up and working better, or people getting a response so they will know where they can coordinate with FEMA and take that site?
It was, yeah, it was, it, I, I just think the sheer volume, everything that was going on was pretty overwhelming, so it took a little bit of time of getting it, and there was some delays, there was a lot of delays starting with that, but now it's, we're able to contact people, we're able to get ahold of people for donations for needs and things like that, so that is getting up there to them, but there's still a lot of need, there's still places that they haven't touched yet.
Do you see the specific request for these supplies and things changing as this, as time goes on?
Yes.
Will it shift more from water and food, for example, to clothing and winter type stuff and protection, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, they're already seeing the change in the weather up there, they had a search and rescue team that had went out, I believe from Hickory, Saturday morning, and the area that they were getting deployed into, it was around thirty degrees between the mountains, and then, of course, they were going to be up there all day and it would turn cold again, so, yeah, it's definitely going to change.
All right, we thank you guys, hold on a minute, gentlemen, any questions from you gentlemen, anything that piques, piques curiosity, want to ask them whether they're here? All right, we thank you very much, and, and I, on behalf of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, and I believe they'll say it here, you know, we, we want to be a good neighbor, we can't be a good neighbor like sharing our landfill and things that we need to do to help people in a disaster like that, if, if we can't be one now, I don't know when we can be, so if anything that we can do for them through the emergency medical services, emergency medical, emergency management, anything above and beyond what you're already doing that you deem to be appropriate, I think and reasonable, that I think this board would be certainly in favor of doing anything that's reasonable and appropriate, and because as you say, this will not be a few days, this will not be a few weeks, this will potentially and possibly probably be not only several months, but a few years to recover.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, I'd like to publicly thank Eddie Settle and Sarah Stevens for what they've done in North Carolina General Assembly, you hear the, the term rainy day?
Yeah.
Not too many years ago, I can remember when there was no rainy day fund, there was no fund balance, we owed the federal government several billion dollars, and in the last few years, the fund balance and the rainy day fund in North Carolina, I think it exceeds four billion dollars, something like that, well, guess what, the rainy day's here.
Yeah.
And, and that's what that's for, and that's called good financial management, and the, I heard the Vice President say that the, they were going to give folks seven hundred and fifty dollars, which I really don't understand, because these needs are catastrophic in western North Carolina, these people need a lot more than seven hundred and fifty dollars for homes, folks that don't even have flood insurance, that are never going to recover from this, the roads are gone, I heard the federal government say today they were releasing a hundred million dollars, a hundred million dollars is probably five bridges out there, a hundred million dollars won't even fix the bank on I forty up there that's gone, and so, you know, for people who come from foreign countries all over the world with fake asylum claims that have been invited here to the United States, for heaven's sake, they get a, a card with twenty-five hundred dollars on it, they get a four-star hotel, they get a cell phone, they get free medical care and everything you can imagine, and so, and we send billions and billions of dollars overseas when we need it right here in western North Carolina, and I think it's a sad commentary on what's gone on in this country for the last four years in particular, and quite frankly, a lot, a much longer time than that, but nevertheless, our legislature has done a great job.
Thank you. Any other comment, questions, gentlemen?
Thank you for the job you're doing and keep up the good work if, if you? Let us know what you, what you need, we, I just, a week before, we, I went with Byron to emergency management seminar, and it was saying, the, the topic was stay in your lane, and all that I can do is say, I'm, I'm here to support you. And all that I can do is say, I'm, I'm here to support you. And you let us know what you need and we'll do our best to supply it for you. And other than that, I'll get out of your way and let the experts handle it, so.
Thank you. We've, we've got Surrey County second to none with the resources we've got and the people we've got here.
We appreciate it. And if you do see something that you feel like you need to run by us, we're here. And we're here to support you. And if it's reasonable and you think it's recommended, again, I think we're going to be happy to be a good neighbor. Any question about anything, feel free to run it by us. Thank you guys all for coming and for your presentation. And we'll, we'll be here if you need us. Thank you very much. Okay, gentlemen, we are getting down to our general county business. And without, and probably along the lines of some of the things we've already said. But Mr. Mayor, and I'll start off on this end tonight. Any, any particular comment you would have as a county commissioner about general county business?
Oh, yeah, I just like to thank the Eagle Scouts that came in tonight. That's a lot of hard work and dedication over the years to obtain Eagle Scout rank. Is that right, Commissioner Goins? But, yeah, I was with Joanna Radford and a lot of folks from Cooperative Extension, Tax Department in Dobson, filling a trailer Thursday. All the love and support and monetary donations, any kind of, any, they brought in anything you're just about to think of. And once you look at it, you say, well, Lord, I didn't even think about they might need that. But we loaded that truck and sent it to Lincoln County Airport Thursday afternoon. And I believe Joanna said they had 25 pilots sitting there with their private planes, taking off and landing every eight minutes. Okay, above all, you know, just the love and support, everybody's come together. Humanity can survive. And in times like these, it, it rises above all. And I know those people are devastated up there and I wish I could do something. But we done, we done what we need to do here to send supplies. And I'm, I'm just proud to be, as part of that effort. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marion. Mr. Goins.
Same. A lot of people come together and donate supplies. I had the opportunity to go to a little community called North Cove above Marion on Tuesday. And we went as far as we could go. Bridge washed out there, right below Limble Falls. And the devastation, it gets worse as you, as you head up the mountain. They said it was worse over the mountain. But what we saw, you know, a river was washed out, looked like about a football, about 100 yards wide, mud laying everywhere, power lines down across the road, power poles laid in the road, just a, just a bad situation. We got to drop some supplies off below Marion at a church. They were glad to get it. They were out of water. I had about 20 cases of water on the truck along with diapers and other stuff. And they were very appreciative. I'm like Commissioner Tucker. I think it's, it's going to be a long, long process. And we will have opportunities to help these people for a long time. And they're very dis, it's very disorganized kind of at the moment. I think, you know, Eric, Eric and a lot of people attest to that. I've been in touch with the mayor in Newland. We've offered some support to them. He and I have become friends on the phone. I hadn't met, I hadn't met him, but we've offered some assistance to Newland. I do have some contact information in Newland. So, if you have extra supplies and you want, you want somewhere to send it, I do have, I do have some information there. I do have some contacts there with some folks that if you want to volunteer to help, I can get you some contact numbers to do that. So, it, it, this is going to be a long time. And we'll have opportunities to help these people for a long time. And we just need to continue to pray for them and, and do all that we can for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Mr. Harris?
Good.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, we know somewhat the general theme is it's been for a week and a half now. I, I'd just like to say what a difference one person can make. Our family business had one employee, has one employee that has family up that way in Black Mountain area. He come to his bosses and wanted to know if he could help. And maybe they could maybe assist with the vehicle or something like that. After four days or whatever of, with our family business being a center, I think we probably sent about two tractor trailer loads up to the Black Mountain area on eight different vehicles pulling trailers and all that stuff. So, it all came from just one person wanting to help. It grew from that. So, as usually I'll say how blessed I am to live in Surrey County. And I, I thank the Lord for the blessings that we do have here in our county. And we talked about just a little bit east, we would be in those dire straits also. So, I appreciate Commissioner Harris's prayer tonight. And thanking the Lord that we're, that we're able, that we survived this big tragedy and such as, and that we're all able to help and appreciate those willing to step up, those that volunteer and go for a week or two, not knowing what, what to expect. But I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm blessed to live here in Surrey County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. And again, to all who participated tonight, congratulations to all of our Eagle Scouts. What an honor. And Lord, you can take, take with you the rest of your lives. We appreciate you. We appreciate our EMS, our emergency management and all the things that we've offered through you guys as a county to help our neighbors in this time of despair and distress and destruction. And again, we hope, we know you, we take great satisfaction in knowing you're there to, to continue to coordinate with those folks as best as you guys see fit. And let us know if we can help you. And for all others that came and participated tonight or just sat there as a visitor, we appreciate you coming. Always glad to have you here. And I think, again, with all things said about the hurricane in our neighbors west, let's keep them in our prayers because those folks have suffered terribly. It's a lot, a lot of them's lost loved ones and they've, a lot of them's lost everything, the guys you all know. And it's going to be a long, long process. So, keep them in your prayers. We appreciate you folks so much. Gentlemen, I think that concludes the biggest part of our regular meeting tonight. I am going to ask for a motion to go into closed session. It's a little unusual, but because of the essence of time and we could get a little bit done tonight by having us assembled at the same place. Before we get that motion to go into closed, I would like to, before we do go to closed, after we get the motion to do so, we would like to briefly open up a discussion for the Mount Airy Surrey County Airport Authority meeting to do some quick business, hopefully. And when that is concluded, we will then directly go to a closed session of this board for discussion of some legal concerns and matters. So, looking for a motion to go to closed. And before we do, a brief opportunity to open up a Mount Airy Surrey County Airport Authority meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we open up the Airport Authority meeting. And that when we adjourn that meeting, that we go into closed session.
Yep, and looking for a second. Second. I have a motion for Commissioner Goins, a second for Commissioner Marion. In discussion, there being none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so, that has concluded this meeting. And Commissioner Larry Johnson, you are the.
All right. Gentlemen, we're back in session. I don't think we have any items to bring out of close for this segment, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for Commissioner Goins. We'll hear a second.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.